Good evening. Please join me for a pledge, us for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Ford, are you ready?
I am, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You have many, many...
We have lots of...
...officers.
So, Madam Mayor, Commissioner Manager Womack, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to present our promotions, either from firefighters to officer, a different officer level, or to our Fire Academy graduates. Much like the Police Department, we honor this. We like to do it once a year, so that way then there's not so many going on throughout, so that's why you see about 10 individuals behind you. One of the cool things that we did when we first started at the Fire Rescue Department was that we held workshops shortly after I started, so we could as a team form our core values, our mission statement, and our vision. Out of that came something that was very powerful. They're not just words on a piece of paper, it's truly what we believe in, because the workshop, our values, and our mission statement came from the members. They all played a part, they all wrote at least part of it, and it's something that's really, really meaningful. Following our discussion about promotions, we're going to do one of the most important and powerful aspects of public safety, we'll do the badge pinning ceremony. To us, this is a very important tradition, but what it also symbolizes is that the public has entrusted us with something very special, and we don't take that lightly. Moreover, we understand that doing this is something that isn't just us, it's all of you, and just as important, it's the family and loved ones that are behind this. So as we do the badge pinning, each firefighter has a loved one that they selected that will come up and do the badge pinning, and as they pin that badge, it symbolizes that they are, it's a team, it truly is a team concept. Without our support, whether it's family, city commission, citizens, we couldn't do what we do today. So with that, I'll have everybody walk on up, please. So those that are getting pinned and the people that are pinning, so just line up the best you can, so you can face out towards the audience so your family and friends can see you, it's going to be hard to squeeze in, but... So we're going to read the core values affirmation, and then we will pin after that, okay? So for the uniformed personnel standing in front of you, please raise your right hand. Having reviewed the core values of the City of Lapeer Fire and Rescue, you affirm that you will act with integrity, lead with purpose, and serve with professionalism; that you will take ownership of your actions, strive for excellence, and embrace a culture of safety; that you will remain optimistic and positive in the face of challenges, and treat all people with courtesy, empathy, and respect; and that these values will guide your decisions, your conduct, and your service on and off duty as a proud member of this department. Do you affirm your commitment to the following? If so, please respond, "I do."
I do.
Thank you so much. Loved ones, please stand in front of your uniformed firefighters and pin them, please. Well, as you can see, as we're finishing up the last pinning here, we have two other uniformed personnel that pinned, you know, so the fire service has managed family tradition historically, and thankfully it continues to be so. So if City Commissioners, Madam Mayor, Andrew Womack, and the public, if you could, please go around the floor. And Madam Mayor, can we have just a few moments to excuse everybody and let them...
Sure. You're welcome to stay, but I understand that we have other things to do this evening.
Yeah, we're going to go outside real quick and take a few photographs, so...
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, the loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very beautiful.
Okay, let's step outside, we'll go right now, we'll go out the front door.
The press is leaving, if we say whatever.
That was a joke, that was a joke.
So I believe we're ready to continue the meeting then, and what we need is approval of the agenda for August 18th, plus there's an addition to our agenda, which would be G3, that was put in front of the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda and add G3 to the agenda.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Petrie and supported by Commissioner Glickman. Discussion. All those in favor say yes, opposed say no. That motion has carried. Now for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held August 4th, 2025.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Atwood and supported by Commissioner Swindell as the discussion regarding the minutes. Hearing done. All those in favor say yes, opposed say no. That motion's carried. Now we're to public comments, I hope I brought the branch with me.
Okay, I have it at one time.
Brad Haggedon, our Lapeer County Commissioner, is on the agenda, he contacted us to let us know that he's not able to be here this evening, so he wanted us to just give a brief update from the county commission meeting that was held August 14th, that they approved the new fee schedule of animal control. This hadn't been updated since 2022, and now they're offering a two-year dog license. Also, they approved the request from Front and Report for the new copier machines, which is at a cost reduction in what they were currently paying for our pay. And they also approved dues payment to the Michigan Association of Counties for $14,982.02. That is a phenomenal resource for the counties, and on a personal note, is very honored to serve on the judiciary and public safety committees giving Lapeer County a voice statewide on local issues. Now, is there anybody else who would like to give a public comment at this time? Commissioner Petrie?
Dear Heavenly Father, we invite you Holy Spirit here. Lord, I just want to express gratitude for your hand of protection on this community once again. You are a good, good Father. Thank you for the men that protect us. Thank you that this huge festival went off without anything that was, I don't want to say worth reporting, but nothing dangerous, so thank you, Lord, that we were able to gather all these people here and have a good celebration and safety. Thank you for your continued hand of protection over this community. We ask that you will always be our protector. Thank you for all that you're doing in this community, all that you've done in the past, the people that you have used in the past currently, and those that you have in mind for the future. Thank you for the people that are here that care about our community. Thank you for the leaders here that want to have a hand in shaping this community. Pray that you be with us, give us wisdom, because we know that wisdom comes only from you. Help us to have good discussions, unity, peace, and good outcome. I pray all these things in your precious Son, Jesus' name, amen.
No other public comments at this time? We can proceed to the bill listing. Commissioner Brady?
I make a motion to approve the bill listing for August 18th, 2025, in the amount of
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there any discussion on the bill listing? Commissioner Atwood?
In honor of the late Commissioner Bennett, that's a lot of money.
Is that your only comment?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. It was nice to throw that in there, because I guess, okay, now that's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
That motion's carried. And for the administrative report on the election storage, what's your pleasure for that? Commissioner Brady?
I motion to approve the bid submitted by D.H. Reynolds and Rehab LLC for the construction of an election storage room in the amount not to exceed $5,479.68, and approve the corresponding fiscal year '25-'26 budget amendment as presented.
Is there a support? Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell as the discussion regarding that. Commissioner Brady?
Is this going in kind of the open where the copy machine space is?
So for anybody who's visited the office recently, you see that we've moved all of the election equipment into the central room where the old copy machine used to be. It's just part of a rejuggling, you know, how we have our personnel set up in that office with Ms. Russell's retirement and the hiring of a new HR professional. We want to make sure that the HR files were put into a locked office, also give her some privacy for any HR-related work that she has to do. So we've moved her into the former storage closet where some of this equipment was located. You know, the $5,000 amount, I could have approved, but I don't think we budgeted for this amount, which is why we're bringing it to you for a budget amendment, but as you guys saw in the clerk's memo and announcement we haven't made yet, the clerk has brought in a significant amount of extra money for storage, I'm sorry, for election-related things this year, so I think this is an appropriate course of action and it will, I think, better utilize the space that we have in our office.
Any other further discussion? Commissioner Petrie, just wondering if we all get a tour when that's done?
Well, I think we've got everything kind of set up the way it will be without the walls yet, but yeah, certainly you guys are welcome into my office anytime you guys stop by, you know. Ms. Sanchez, did you have anything to add to what I've said already?
Well, then this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Then for the WWTP boiler replacement. Madam Mayor. Commissioner Swindell?
I move to approve a contract with Johnson &amp; Wood Mechanical Contractor for the demolition and disposal of existing boilers and associated components, and for the installation of two new boilers at the wastewater treatment plant, for an amount not to exceed $205,540. And approve this MI annual HVAC maintenance and service contract with Johnson &amp; Wood for an amount not to exceed $4,071, and authorize city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Glickman as the discussion on this item. Okay, hearing done. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
That motion's carried. Okay, now for G3, the community center pavilion. Commissioner Brady?
I make a motion to approve a quote from Timber Quest Construction Company for the construction of a 20-foot by 30-foot pavilion at the Lapeer Community Center, and to authorize the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery to execute the agreement.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Brady and supported by Commissioner Swindell. Is there a discussion?
Do we know if that will be done before the snow flies?
I believe that's the reason we tried to add it on to your, well, we did add it to your agenda today, is because we want to get it done before the snow flies. Mr. Church, do you have an estimated date of installation?
Yeah, the quicker I can get to him tomorrow, he can get us on the schedule. He thinks by mid to late September they can get it done.
We originally talked about getting it done before the summer programming, but that didn't happen, so it'll be ready for next year.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, this involves money, so roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Swindell?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Motion's carried. All right, so, well, what did our city managers report already?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to discuss and get direction from the commission regarding the proposed Genesee Street road diet and pedestrian crossing. As you guys will recall, we asked the board to support a study to be completed to see if this would be approvable under MDOT standards and, you know, promotion of the pedestrian crossing from the Crampton Park area to the northern edge of Genesee, which would allow pedestrians safely to get to the downtown area. So we have with us today Mr. Paul Amira from Row, and I believe that's Haley Savola with him, who helped work on the studies that you saw on your packet, I apologize for the, I think it was 160 pages. Great, great work. Great, great work, but a lot of work, which I'm sure that these guys, you know, all read every single page.
Sure, I did.
So I guess if the commission has any thoughts, questions, or concerns, these are the folks here that you might want to talk to and ask questions of. And then I would ask for a motion as presented.
Commissioner Brady?
I see bike lanes, five-foot bike lanes on either side. I'm just wondering how far down, like what's the total length of the bike lanes?
I didn't stand in front of these ladies, folks. Thank you. Well, Madam Mayor and commissioners, you can come up to here. This is Haley Savola, our traffic engineer. So the question was about the bike lanes. If that's the way the commission would like to go, I would recommend they would exist. Unfortunately, you would have to stop at both ends, at M24 and the Saginaw intersections because there's not enough room unless... There's just definitely not enough room at M24, period. And so there would be those unfortunate gaps still.
Is there, is there a benefit to having, I mean, obviously to ride bikes on, but does there, is there any other benefit to having the bike lane there with like a 12-foot lane as opposed to, I don't know, 15-foot lane or whatever the other standard is?
Yeah, you don't want to actually go bigger than 12-foot for the lanes because then it starts becoming unclear what the driver is supposed to do. So we would want to keep them narrow and they would just be kind of a dead space unless the road gets reconstructed and narrowed, which obviously is a much bigger price tag.
I think that's a Seinfeld episode. Okay, so just putting in the bike lanes, even if they're not being utilized very much, still gives you the right length or the width of the lane?
Right.
So there's not enough room on the west side of 24 to have bike lane on each side?
Right.
Because having one has been an interesting challenge because, you know, they should be on that way, going that way only with the traffic, but they don't. It's a bike lane and there's only one, so we go both ways. I see it often because I live right there and it's really, I don't know. It's really interesting, you know, watching the people and try to navigate it. They're, it's not well-marked either, I guess. So people get confused and they ride both ways on one side. I love bike lanes. I think we should have more and I think they should be better marked. But I think one is kind of a, not the greatest idea because people go both ways in it and that's dangerous. So one on both sides, all in. One side, I don't love it.
Well, if I, sorry, if I could just address that, obviously you only have so much width on that road, so we could only add one. But we also did install a brand-new ADA accessible sidewalk on the north side. So any person who wants to ride a bike in a safe manner, they could do it there. Plus, they can ride in the lane under state law on the north side if they wanted to. So persons who are going the wrong way in the bike lane, they're doing it deliberately in contrary to the law. But I get your point. Yes, I agree that having bike lanes on both sides is a step up.
Commissioner Petrie?
A couple of questions. Now, when we redo the bridge on Genesee, MDOT, we have a grant for that and MDOT really is behind all that. Will they be making that bridge wider, allowing us to have sidewalks on both sides that would make a bike lane not necessary because we would have nice sidewalks? I don't think they're going to put a bridge back the same size that it is, I'm guessing, but... So, so I'm thinking about that.
Could I just, Mr. Slush, do you remember if they're going to make the bridge wider on both sides?
I believe they're going to make the sidewalks wider.
Yeah.
I think there's a mark for six-foot sidewalks on both sides.
Yeah, so we did take that into consideration when we were redoing the Genesee Bridge.
Okay, so then we would have nice sidewalks to ride instead of a bike lane?
I don't know if you can run sidewalks on the south side of Genesee because of the way it goes down at the bridge there.
I think there's a spot for it after the plans have been, it's been a while since I've seen it. I think there is a.
So we're adding the pedestrian walk right there so it will be easy to traverse.
The other question is with an island, a cement island going in thereabouts, I'm thinking about the DPW, big trucks coming that way that need to turn either way. I'm thinking about the ambulances coming out. We don't plan for that. So having a pedestrian crossing right there feels a little dangerous to me?
I think that'll all be part of the design process of where would it be proposed to be put at because you're absolutely right. Every time I make a left-hand turn there, I think about where that island's going to go. Because I think you would be limiting the ability to make left-hand turns there. That's what these two folks are here for.
Yeah, actually, we placed it a bit to the west of the intersection so that the left-turning movements would still be honorable. We wouldn't want to put it right immediately on the intersection.
So more, so a little further west, maybe in front of Hungry Howies? So that would, I don't know, their driveways are extraordinarily wide.
Yeah, we thought they had more than enough driveways, so we thought one could be taken away and made a sidewalk area.
Haley, it looks like you desperately want to say something because you got the page opened up.
Oh, no, I'm just looking so I can follow along and I can answer any questions.
Commissioner Brady?
A part of the discussion right now is island or just painted stripes hawk crossing. Is that true?
So I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe a hawk is only intended if it's a four-lane road still at the end of this because a hawk system, obviously three lanes, they put the safety island in. Now, we could do both, but hawk systems are pretty expensive.
Yeah, just for a hawk system operates pretty much like a traffic signal. So if someone comes up to that crossing, they would push the push button and it stops traffic in both directions. So you're putting in string poles, you know, big foundations, push buttons. So it's roughly a $300,000 installation, so it's almost like a traffic, pretty much a traffic signal at that point.
Is there, is there also like a three-lane crossing like we have with the two additional crossings that are on further, further west?
Yeah, so over by your house in Chatfield, it's a much, in my opinion, more residential, slower speed, non-commercial area, which is why we didn't install a pedestrian crossing. No, we could if we thought it was necessary. But I think the reason we're talking about pedestrian crossing islands here is because it's faster, it's more commercial, and being able to put something where people cross half the road, stop, wait for another opening and cross another. How wide are the lanes? 12 times 3, 36, plus 10, 46 foot?
Well, the new one would be 12 foot plus the five-foot bike lane, roughly.
Yeah.
Yes, so I rode it, crossed over, rode my bike today and crossed over there specifically because I knew we were doing this. And I still had to cross 46 feet.
Yeah.
I just had four lanes that I had to look for. And you're looking at, you're looking up a hill at a traffic light and you're looking up a hill at a traffic light. So I could time the crossing myself, although I was, I don't know, probably jaywalking at the time to do it. But knowing that it was just three lanes, really two lanes, you know, traffic coming at me a little more predictably that way and a little more predictable this way, I would be somewhere in the mindset of three lanes with just a crosswalk. I understand that may not be.
Well, I think that'd probably be my recommendation too because you can add a hawk system later on if you want to add significant cost. But I tend to agree with you, especially with just one lane each way and the fact that you can stop in the middle and wait and wait for it to be safe. That just makes sense to me.
What I don't want is another stop for the cars. So they'd have to stop at 24 and at Court and at Saginaw and now also at Calhoun.
Yeah, you know what, there's a lot of literature on that as well about how, you know, people don't understand what hawk systems are because, I mean, they're more common down by Ann Arbor. They're not up here. Now, we do have in a lot of places where the bike path will cross over a major road, user actuated just flashing yellow lights, but not a hawk system. And I think unfortunately you'll have pedestrians who think, yay, they have to stop for me. I don't think that's what the law says. I think the law says you only have to stop for people who are already pedestrians in the roadway. So I'm a little afraid of hit the button, lights flash, and then you step out right into a car and you hit. I think by not having the hawk system, you're still seeing pedestrians. I mean, you're still the car, you know, could get hit by a car. You still have to exercise caution.
Commissioner Petrie?
So have we established, like the study that I, that I saw is a one-day study. It's on a Tuesday. Have we done a study with pedestrians and bikers and counted how many people are trying to cross? Because I want to establish the need. Is this in our master plan? We have so many other streets and things that need to be done. I want people to be able to cross safely too. I just don't want more congestion at that corner to turn left. I know that a lot of people that know the back streets use the left turn lane to turn by the park and go up and avoid the light because you can go the back way, get to the M24 a different way. I'm, I'm just concerned about on a Friday, on a Saturday, during a festival, that the backup for the left turn lane to go south, if you're headed west, turning south. That backs up on a Friday or during school. It's, that's backed up way past Crampton Park Drive. So changing it, making it three lanes, how far is it going to back up?
These guys are here for me.
Yeah, we didn't study that particular movement that would require another traffic count. And you're, you're referring to like when it's backing up on M24 and they started making left onto Monroe to avoid that?
Right. A lot do.
Right.
I, for one, always do just to avoid light if I can because you can do the back way. So I am concerned, how far are we going to back up? Because on a Friday and some, you know, game night or whatever, I just don't want it more congested for that intersection.
Sorry, are you talking about the Genesee and 24 intersection or?
Yes, because that, that turn lane to turn left to go south is, is backed up often. Especially during.
All the way to Howies, for sure.
Right. During school hours and game nights and.
Do you still hope, I want to speak. Commissioner Swindell?
I agree. I don't like the island in the middle for those same reasons because 24 does back up that far. And when downtown is closed, every other street is closed. To go north, Calhoun is it. That's the only place there is to turn. And if you only have one lane, now you're stopping all the traffic. I love the flashing light down there. I would love it more if we put stop when the pedestrians are here just like they have in so many other places, almost everywhere I travel. Where there's a crosswalk without a light, it says stop when there's pedestrians here. I think down there where the trail crossing is, that would be a great addition as well as to this because it is only three lanes, but that is a very busy intersection. And it's not a straight intersection. It's crooked at the end. Visibility is already an issue and like, I don't... An island would be a mess, for sure. Not on a random Tuesday, but lots of days at noon, the light to turn south on 24 is backed up farther than that. Most days at noon, 12:15, you can't, that wouldn't work. But I love the stop here when the pedestrians are coming. Stop here when the pedestrians are coming. Those signs work and they help. With the same push button flashy light down there by Lake Drive.
So one thing to note about the signal timing that's at M24 in Genesee is that that's an MDOT signal. So if there is any, because that, that movement is not great. So any changes that would need to happen would have to go through MDOT for that. And that's probably a signal timing thing.
I'm not talking about signal timing. I'm talking about the new crosswalk.
Okay. You, I thought you were talking about the.
We can follow the plane to MDOT all we want and so can poor Mr. Ross, but that doesn't mean they're going to do anything about it.
No, I was just.
At this time, they won't. So they're useless to us. We have no control. We have control of this.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. I was just saying for the backup of the traffic though, to get through that signal, that would have to go through MDOT because that's, that is the signal timing for that left turn movement.
And that's why I think it's a terrible idea to put a thing there because MDOT is not going to fix it. People have balled. They've tried to fix it. Well, it's only this time of day. It's only these three times a day. It's only this date, you know?
Yep.
So it.
Oh, yeah, yep.
They're not even part of the conversation.
Commissioner Brady?
According to what the, what is proposed in the plan, how far back does the left turn lane come back? Because where it splits now, is like, is it, is it projected to change where that? Because there's a, there's three lanes for eastbound, right? Westbound.
As you get closer to M24.
As you get closer to M24 of true left lane splits, is there?
Yeah, part of our study was, we don't really like the way it's signed out there now because it's not really clear that you're driving into a left turn lane. There's not enough signage for that. So this three-lane proposal would actually fix that problem because the left turn lane would be going all the way down the entire segment.
So from whatever point we put kind of a crosswalk or an obstruction, whatever that ends up being, that then becomes a usable left turn lane?
Yep, for the whole distance.
And, and everybody that's driving straight through or left is basically in the correct lane and so they decide they want to make a left turn.
But if a curb or an island gets put there, that then becomes where people are going to have to enter into the lane. But it would be all the way to Hungry Howies.
And actually, we could implement the three lane without the island, obviously, and then watch how it's behaving and then do another little traffic count during those busy times when M24 is backing up so far to see if the island is a good idea or not.
And the only real trouble there would be people trying to maybe get north onto Calhoun.
Or Monroe.
Or, or to Monroe if the turn lane is all blocked up. But it gets that way anyway now.
It does. Commissioner Petrie, did you hear your hand up?
That's what I was, that's what I was thinking about. If you're trying to make a left turn onto Monroe or Calhoun, we have one turn lane and it's a Friday and people are.
That's a, yeah, that's a messy uphill. Like if I'm going that way, I come to downtown and can't come down that.
Yeah, if there was more room, you would actually probably want to have two left turn lanes there. Here's just that.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yeah, I'm having a little brain tickle here. So does our sidewalk stop at Monroe Street or does it continue all the way to Bentley Street?
On the south side?
Because I feel like it stops.
It's a big parking lot at the park. There's those shade trees. There's no, there's no sidewalk in between the park and Hungry Howies.
On that side?
But after the, after the muffler man parked the sidewalk picks back up to cross the bridge.
So are, are we going to add a sidewalk to that section? Is that like part of the crosswalk there?
Which one, on the south side?
I think that, is there a sidewalk side?
It's a park.
You talked from the side.
I don't think there is.
I think there's grass today, so we drew it with a sidewalk, assuming you want to add a two-inch sidewalk.
So there will be a sidewalk?
We would recommend it if you put in the crossing there.
Through?
That, I guess the game plan would be to connect that to the tunnel trail?
Well, I think eventually. Once people are in the park, they can, you know, safely travel wherever they want to within the park, which includes the tunnel somewhere, which pops up on the other side of 24.
I mean, I'm not really a huge fan of the island. Bike lane, I, I get the bike lane, but if we change our bike ordinance to allow bikes on sidewalk, the only real bikes that would need to be in a bike lane is class three?
However you guys want to finalize.
One, two, and three can use that, but one and two could possibly use a sidewalk. Something to consider.
However you guys finalize that.
Commissioner Brady?
I think that the things you were discussing kind of goes back to something that Mr. Petrie was talking about and it's that need. And with that tunnel coming under the road, I, I see an increased desire to go from downtown to the west side of 24. And so for me, I know when I was communicating with Mr. O'Mack, it was, okay, that tunnel still doesn't go anywhere until you cross this road. So now I can be, I can be here, I can go down Calhoun, cross right at Calhoun, be in the park. From the park, I can get across 24 and then I'm on sidewalk, going south, going west, bike lane. I can get all the way down that way. So I'm not trying to argue anything that anybody doesn't already understand that we, that we would improve traffic flow through this. But the need, the need will, will grow with that because of the tunnel, so.
Just adding another safer connection to.
People are going to, I think people are going to cross the road more anyway.
Yeah, I don't know who at this table has crossed the road. Yeah, I don't know who at this table has crossed the road there on foot, but it is, it's, it's dangerous.
I have not.
Crampton right there?
Yeah, I feel like a spry young man, and I get into the middle of that, I feel like a chicken getting run over by, or a frogger or something, getting run over by trucks.
Well, that's why we have a crosswalk at 24 and 21 and we have another one at Court. Now, I know it is a couple of blocks, but because of the hill and everything, I'm, I just, I'm very concerned about the safety of crosswalk there.
Commissioner Allen?
I mean, people do already cross the street, I think, at Calhoun and Bentley. Just to give a more visible safety route, I think you would have to, where they're suggesting, instead of just adding crosswalks to Bentley and Calhoun's intersection there.
Just to drive from Bentley to Calhoun is a challenge.
I'm passionate about this topic. I don't know if you know.
Apparently. It's good, it's good.
So I think at the very least, going down to three lanes is an improvement for crossing the road. And I think an improvement above that would be just painting stripes, maybe some signs that says cross traffic does not stop. Like even just that little bit would be an improvement. I, I don't really like going beyond that because I think the traffic island is going to cause a lot of extra unanticipated headaches that I just can't foresee. And I don't know, even, even foreseeable, you can see that's going to be a problem. And I don't love the Hawk system because of the expense and because of people not knowing how to use it and thinking that's a traffic signal. So what I'm most comfortable with is three lanes with wide white stripes and good signage.
Well, somebody asked this question because, you know, all I'm asking for at this point is authority to work with the engineers to help design this stuff. I don't know if there's any reason why we can't do the work to design the three lanes and say theoretically, if we're going to put in a traffic island, here's where we would put it, here's how it would be sized. Because you guys are going to see this again before we finalize it, prove it. I just don't see any reason in cutting ourselves off at the knees right now and saying, no, we're just not going to even look at that. Because, you know, we've got some brilliant engineers in front of us who can find some great options for us that might work. And I think it would also give us some more time to look at exactly how far the traffic is backing up there and whether we need to look at maybe some alternatives that would improve the traffic flow through there. So that's really all I'm asking for at this point is, you know, direction from you guys to at least investigate it with the engineers and then at some future day you would be asked to approve of the final product.
Madam Mayor? How much did we spend on this study? Does anybody have that number?
It was five thousand and something.
Okay. And so we would be doing hopefully another study on the need for people crossing. We, I feel like we should do a study on how many bikes and people want to cross that we're making it go to three lanes for because we have to think of the, the traffic and the congestion that it could cause. It could be, it could, it could be paralyzing to getting around town if we have a left turn lane that goes, you know, one left turn lane, I, I, one lane, I just think we need to.
So I.
How much would we be spending? Like you, you want us to approve you looking into this, but what, at what cost? That, that's.
So I haven't asked you for any more money. And I understand your concerns, but I think you're looking at it from a chicken and ape perspective. And Mr. Brady, I'm sure has some thoughts on this, too. I think people don't cross there right now because it's dangerous.
Because it's dangerous.
Right.
If we make it safe, I think a lot more people are going to cross there.
Will utilize it.
The question is, what will make it safe? And then beyond that is the problems we may cause for traffic worth the safety for pedestrians?
What I'm asking is how many want to cross right there instead of what we already have?
Don't cross there because it's dangerous.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We don't know that, but we're assuming that we have all these people that are like, hey, I need to cross right there. Maybe.
They don't because it's dangerous. If we have a place for them, they will use it, like.
Please have her be acknowledged.
So again, Ms. Petrie, I'm not asking to spend more money at this point. I mean, if they say we need another study, then I'll probably bring it back to the board for authorization to pay for it. What I'm saying is, I just want to look, you know, I want to move forward. To be able to move forward, I want to make sure that you guys are at least in the same ballpark as me. Because if you guys are like, not four lanes and no pedestrian crossing, then that gives me my direction. But if a mid lane crossing for pedestrians is something that they can look at and give me options, I can bring the options back to the board.
Yeah, it's not laying any specifics down here in the motion, so. Commissioner Brady?
So I, I think Ms. Petrie's concern is maybe with the road diet. And from my understanding of it is that the conclusion of the road diet one Tuesday was no decrease in traffic flow, potentially an increase in traffic flow. Is that correct?
Yeah, so when we did the study, we do look at that. We look at a full, you know, the peak hours of traffic. So we did AM and PM peak hour. And we pick a Tuesday because that's, that follows MDOT's requirements and their standards and traffic industry standard. You want to just pick a normal day. You don't want to have anything that, you know, school's in session, you want to make sure all of that's happening. So with the Tuesday that we picked, it was a normal day, their school wasn't still in session, it was a good day, so there wasn't any rain or snow or anything like that. And the only intersection that didn't operate, that pretty much operated, everything operated as it is now. So there wasn't a decrease in traffic flow through the inters, through the corridor, nothing got worse. The only intersection that operated poorly was that left turn lane at Genesee and Main, but that's how it is operating now. So it didn't get necessarily worse, it just operated as it does now. So there wasn't a decrease or, you know, significant backup through there or anything like that with going from four lanes to three lanes.
And, and there is a reduction in crashes?
Yes.
So that's, that's the big ticket. Not so much traffic flow as crashes.
Right. There was a lot of reruns, there was a lot of sideswipes, and that's from people, you know, changing lanes throughout the corridor or someone's turning left or turning right and they're not stopping. So they're hitting the vehicles in front of them. So when you take those through, when you take those turning vehicles out of the through movement, those crashes decrease. So it's a safety, it's a safety improvement along the roadway.
I just wanted to see if the other professionals in the room had any thoughts.
I think she's spot on as far as crashes go, that makes sense. I don't have data in front of me to give numbers on the west side per se, but I, I think the real concern, too, is the training. That would back up also turning on that left side, but, but yeah, I'm all for safety. So if we can reduce that, then it makes sense to me.
I have a question, and it may be irrelevant, but do you see in the future, like three years, five years, is it possible to widen that road or are we not widening it because you can't because of buildings or whatever?
Well, we can always widen it.
Okay.
The question is, how much money do you want to spend on bike?
It's getting torn up now.
So my assumption.
You want to round about, let's do it now.
My assumption is the curb line would be extremely expensive, plus the filters along the dip off on the edge of the road. I mean, that's huge cost. I'm sure Paul Mier could, you know, do it for forty million dollars. But I'm not sure we want to spend it.
Well, I'm only asking because I, I'm thinking down the road in five years, are we going to say, oh my gosh, now we got to widen the road at this point and then we've spent X amount of dollars here? I'm just questioning, I'm not saying this is what we should do, I just want to know what, what would happen in the future if it's five years or six years.
Can I ask a relevant question then to Ms. Haley? So traffic counts, I'm assuming there's MDOT standards for how many could be a three lane versus a four lane?
Yep.
Could you give us an idea of where we're at?
Yes. So attached to the report, we included some FHWA guidance and traffic or road diets. So what we would be doing here, going from four lane to three lane, really worked all the way up until about twenty thousand vehicles.
Per day.
Per day. And then that's where things kind of fall off and you really should think about having a four lane section. So you guys are well within that.
I'm sorry, what was our number?
See, I had to ask you a question.
I know.
Just in terms of that they were well within the numbers.
Twenty thousand, did you say?
Yeah, twenty thousand.
That this road used to be called in 2001.
On that Tuesday, twenty thousand.
And it was. They built the expressway.
Yep, an average day, yep.
Okay.
Down from what used to be semi. Which you still see sometimes when the expressway shuts down, is that this becomes the other good discussed.
I'll break past your house.
Yes. I'm not mistaken, on M-24 in downtown Oxford, they have the pedestrian crossing with the island.
Yep.
It is just south of.
Burdick.
Burdick. If you want to see how that works, go down on a Thursday night when they have their little concert in the park because it's right across that pavilion.
And then what is the lane on that night?
I'll tell you what.
Those, I, I think it has that Hawk system, is that where the lights start to flash?
It's just a free, like, crossing.
I'm listening to.
Just as an example, it's just one that I know of that has the, the island and it, it's, I mean, that's major traffic road.
And stop for pedestrian signs on both sides of the island.
Yeah. They have one in downtown Lake Orion, too, but the one in Oxford I just am more familiar with because it's such a very busy area and it's right in there downtown.
Okay. Great. Brian, you were down there, could you?
Yeah, in fact, I was.
Help us out a little bit?
I was involved in the streetscape, whoops, sorry, in Oxford during that time period. We have three, actually. They really do work without any flashing lights or anything like that, but we do have the, the pedestrian yield.
Lake Orion is the one that has the flashing light.
You're correct. As you come out of Lake Orion, you have, you have the flashing light. But they are great. They work well. However, I think the difference between downtown Oxford and where we're talking about over here is that we have a very, like, traffic calming there because it's right in our downtown core. I don't know what the speed limit is out here, but it's thirty going through Oxford. And we have gravel trains like you wouldn't believe. So they do work if they're installed properly. We did have the concern of the emergency management people and the fire trucks because at one point we were going to put them all the way down Main Street or, you know, down Washington. But we, we didn't do that because of the concern of the emergency vehicles. We do have a problem at, at East Street in downtown, so the one that's the farthest north as you're leaving the downtown core. We do have a problem with cars turning left onto that island and leaving their whole bottom of their car in the bumper.
Only one's per car.
But I can tell you, if they're done right, they're a wonderful thing. They really do a great thing. And I think if these folks, I trust these folks, and I think if they could do a nice study for you and put together, as your manager is suggesting, a drawing or a rendering of what that would look like and the traffic flow, I, I don't, I wouldn't see anything wrong with that.
Thank you.
And I've crossed there quite a bit on my bike and I'm here to tell you, it is not fun.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
And then to answer the question about how much traffic is out there currently, the, the Tuesday, the average Tuesday that we picked, there's fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five vehicles a day out there. So you're, you're, you're well under that limit.
Three quarters or less, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Three quarters or less.
Yeah. Yep. So this is honestly, that's, that's like the sweet spot now to do a road diet, so.
Are we ready for a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner Swindell?
The move to authorize staff to pursue Genesee Street road diet and pedestrian crossing design work is part of the future Genesee Street road projects between M-24 and Saginaw Street.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Gussman. I hate to ask, but I'll make more discussion.
Are you sitting there?
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Motion's carried.
Okay.
Do you have anything else for your managers?
Uh, not at this time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I alluded to it last meeting, the freshwater garden deal is buttoned up and closed and so, you know, we're moving on to whether I can get approvals or not, but as far as the, the lane transition, that's up.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay, for unfinished. For unfinished business, I would like support to appoint Brody Campbell to the EDC Tiffa Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Commissioner Swindell?
Make a motion to appoint Brody Campbell to the EDC Tiffa Brownfield Redevelopment through.
March, twenty thirty-one.
March first, twenty thirty-one.
One second. Okay. Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and supported by Commissioner Petrie. That's our discussion. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no? That motion's carried. Welcome, Brody. Now, I know that there is another application that has been submitted last week, I believe on Monday, so, for that position. So I assume that's going to the, on the next agenda, perhaps?
It's going to the board first.
The board first. So that'll be whatever meeting in September. And, oh, and then for the local development finance authority, I would like to reappoint Andrew Harrington. And he filled this out on August sixth.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner Swindell?
Make a motion to appoint Andrew Harrington to the local development finance authority through August first, twenty twenty-seven.
Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Swindell and, and supported by Commissioner Atwood. That's our discussion regarding this reappointment. Harrington, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no? That motion's carried. So thank you to Brody and Andrew. Still have a few other openings under the commissioner appointments and a couple under And in your packet, you have the, the departmental communications and the quarterly financial report and investment report. So, and now we're back to public comments. Does anybody have a public comment? Brian?
Good evening. Since my fellow mayor candidates were able to introduce themselves, I guess I'll follow their suit and do the same. Equal rights for all, special privileges for none. These are not my words, but rather those of Thomas Jefferson. I believe in them and I believe in upholding a system of government that serves all of its citizens equally and fairly under the law. Let me remind everyone that the office of mayor is a nonpartisan post. It does not belong to any one political party over another. My name is Brian Clutier and I'm an independent, nonpartisan candidate seeking to gain the trust and respect of all residents necessary in order to garner the votes needed to become the next mayor of the city of LePere. I hold a BA in English and History from the University of Michigan, Cleveland, and a Master of Library and Information Science from Wayne State University in Detroit. I offer thirty years of experience and knowledge in governmental operations, twenty-two of those at CEO level administration and management. I believe in fostering an environment that is committed to fiscal responsibility, governmental sustainability, and high levels of ethical standard and accountability. I serve as Director and CEO of Oxford Public Library. I am the President of the Rotary Club of Oxford, President of the Northeast Oakland Historical Society Museum, President of the Friends of the Marguerite Bianzilli Library, and I sit on the Michigan Library Association's Legislative Analysis Committee and on the Board of Directors of Four County Community Foundation. Outside of my work in public libraries, I have served as Village of Oxford Planning
Outside of my work in public libraries, I have served as Village of Oxford Planning Commission Chair, DEA Design Committee Chair, and was elected to Village Council where I was appointed President Pro Town. As a Rotarian and Paul Harris fellow, I lead by example through Rotary's motto, "Service Above Self." I'm the only candidate who offers extensive experience in governmental strategic planning, developing and administering balanced complex municipal budgets, developing and implementing good zoning ordinances that work for its people, and developing sustainable pathways to making investments in critical infrastructure that reduces taxpayer burden rather than create more. It is time that we set aside our differences and come together to complete the hard work needed to ready this city for our future generation of young people. We owe it to them, and truth be told, we owe it to ourselves as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, another public comment at this time.
Okay, carrying on the closing comments.
Commissioner Glissman?
Oh, thank you. I left my pre-written closing comments at home, but a couple things, and I... Haley, your name is Haley?
Yes.
Yes. Very impressed with you.
Thank you.
You look like such a young woman, that I was just really impressed with your knowledge and your deportment and how you present yourself, though. So, thank you for coming today. Today is Suffrage Day, so it was on this date, August 18th, nineteen twenty, that women got the vote. So, we've come a long way, ladies, as you can see up here, that we got the vote and then we got the power. So, also on this date of seventeen seventy-four, a man by the name of Meriwether Lewis was born, and he was strategic in the Lewis and Clark expeditions across the country, per the request of Thomas Jefferson, and I like to bring him up because I'm a descendant of Meriwether Lewis.
Oh.
And that's, oh, I know what I want to say. The parade was wonderful on Saturday, but extremely hot. But there were so many families out there, and the best, the best part about being in the parade and going down the street is looking at all the little kids. They, the families were there, and the little children were just absolutely delightful, and boy, excited about the candy. So, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Brady?
I have no comment tonight.
Commissioner Petrie?
Um, I wanted to talk about Lupier Days, too, and give a special shout-out to Nina Payne for all the hard work that she does on that weekend, for sure, but throughout the year to, to make it happen, and this particular weekend was just so hot. And I saw her so many times, and she didn't have a choice to be out in the heat. She just was racing around trying to do a lot of things as, as one person, and all the volunteers, I want to thank all the volunteers, because we, we couldn't do what, what happened without her and all those people, just... I, I only walked in the parade and had to be out there from ten to the time the parade was over, and then I could go cool down, but I think I might have had a heat stroke on my way to go cool down. It was, I, I don't remember it being that hot, ever, on a Lupier Day. So, just wanted to thank her for that and all the volunteers, because I don't think they get enough credit. It's easy to criticize, "Well, we wish we had that, or we wish we had that," but that's when you come and volunteer and put your two cents in. So, I heard some things this particular weekend, and read some things on Facebook, which I try so hard not to, and they were mentioning things about, you know, "Let's get rid of the good old boys and gals." And I think I, for one, have lived here my whole life, and I'm so grateful for some of those good old boys and gals, because I watched their hard work, their time, their energy, and their money pour into this community, and I, for one, am so grateful for them. And most of the good old boys, I have to say, have, have left this earth, and so, I'm grateful for what they poured into this community. I'm looking forward to replacing, not replacing, fixing the bricks downtown so that it looks clean and neat, and hopefully we can get to that before the frost. That's it.
Commissioner Swindell?
School starts here on Monday. The balanced schedule has already started some weeks ago, but all the buses and all the kids and all the parents will be all over the road starting next Monday. Everybody watch for the kids, everybody watch for the parents, nobody knows what they're doing, drop-off lines are a hot mass express, so much crying, parents and children alike in the mornings, and just take extra caution and leave five minutes early, because the bus drivers and the parents have to figure it out for a while, so, if you're leaving at that time, leave early, stay safe.
Yeah. Commissioner Wood?
Yes, heading to Lansing tonight, we're doing a, the MML, Michigan Municipal League is doing a press conference in the morning, announcing our housing proposal. I can't give any details yet, Jeff, so you'll have to wait till tomorrow. So, at our last board meeting that we had with the MML board, we had housing pretty good. I know I had asked city staff for information, as all the board members did as well for their local municipalities, and so, they'll be announcing what the MML team took that information and came up with, and we're hoping to get some movement in the House incentive on that. So I'll be joined with other, I think there's going to be some state reps there from both sides of the aisle, as this is a, would be a nonpartisan proposal, so, this would be specifically on attainable housing, so...
Can you email us the link to watch it?
Y-yes.
Thanks.
Does it go on the night, because it's early in the morning, so...
Okay.
Be hanging out with the people in Lansing.
Right.
Should be nice.
I'm sure it will be. We're going to...
Apparently, it is important, because our president, Don Jerry, is driving all the way from St. Marie for the press conference, so, I thought it would be pretty, pretty important to be there.
Yes. Thank you for doing that. That's a huge commitment that you take.
Yes.
I do. Kind of a blend of work and personal, I guess. So, let's see here. I think the city's going to come into some money we didn't expect for an engineering study related to eventually hooking up to the KWA system. Let's see. We just got back our planning and zoning review that we're working with MAP on, so we're going to look about incorporating some of those proposed changes into our zoning ordinances. We did, in fact, receive that grant for the master plan and non-motorized plan, that's fifty thousand dollars, so that'll be coming to you guys for approval. We received a grant thanks to the Clerk's Office regarding ADA compliance. We're going to be working on the back door here at City Hall to make sure that we're ADA compliant, which then, I think, gives us the opportunity to fix the stairs in the front of City Hall as well. Was that ten thousand dollars, I think you got for us? I appreciate that. Water slide is being fixed at the rec center. Lupier Days was awesome, very successful. Let's see. So far, we only have two responses regarding the survey that I sent out to the commission members regarding goals and objectives, so, please, anyone who hasn't filled it out, please do so. And then, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to enjoy Lupier Days as much as I would have liked, because I was giving a tour to Representative McLean's District Director. I spent five or six hours walking around downtown with Mohammed. And, let's see here. Housing, we're working on some housing through the city. That's, Ms. Lewdowski and I, we're going to set up a workshop for you guys to talk about various ways we can increase the housing here in our own community. And I'll be working with Mr. Church and Mr. Slusher regarding shade trees for the downtown. And then we're also going to be working with Mr. Slusher, Mr. Church, and Mr. Alt regarding benches and garbage cans for the downtown. And then past that, my friend Ms. Glissman already stole the two historical facts I wrote down, which was the Nineteenth Amendment and Meriwether Lewis, so, I'll do better next time I have ultras.
You're soon to lose.
And that's all, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Well, I have a few announcements, as always. The East Lupier Farmers Market continues, that's Saturdays, and that's at twelve zero, twelve oh three Emory City Road. The Historic Farmers Market continues as well, that's on Wednesdays and Saturdays, and that's through October 25th, nine thirty to three thirty in downtown. The DDA Lupier Car Cruise is through September 15th, five to nine, on Mondays, and then Friday Bike Night is just August 22nd, that's all it's like, from six to ten. Lupier Chamber Food Truck, don't forget that one, September 8th. I got to mark a double mark on that for myself. From four to eight, in the City Lot Number Five. And the DDA Summer Concert Series is Thursdays through August 21st, so this Thursday would be the last one for that, six thirty to eight. And the Human Development Commission Fund Fair that you approved at the last meeting is August 19th, from one to four, Crampton Park. So, for that. I think we were very fortunate, and I was very excited to see all the employees that have gotten promotions through the fire department. What an awesome thing to have. I don't know, how many were there, fifteen?
About ten.
About ten, seemed like more than that with the, the extra people there for the penny ceremony, so, that was great. I'd like to also thank Nina Payne and the boys from the Chamber, and all the volunteers for putting off another fantastic Lupier Days. They do a great job with that. And, I don't think I really have anything else. So, with that, no further business on the agenda, I, this meeting now is adjourned.